Namaskar. I'm Dr. Stephen Landau, also known as Pasupati. He controls the base propensities. I'm the chief trainer for the Shiva Dancing School of Yoga, which is now associated with the New Humanist College of Asheville. Today, we're going to be talking about chakras as junction boxes. And in reality, the medical aspects of the subtle and crude anatomy and physiology of the chakras. We have about thirty to forty minutes, and we expect to use our time expeditiously. And the best thing to do when you have no time is Samkirtan. Babanam Kevalam means "love is all there is." And so we will have our yoga teacher training starting on March nineteenth of this year, two thousand twenty-two. And you are all invited to participate in that, and we will have other future trainings and other subjects as time goes on. My email is yogi dokta at gmail dot com, Y O G I D O C T A at gmail dot com. My phone number is nine one nine eight six eight four seven two nine, country code is one, and that's also on WhatsApp. So let's begin. We are planning here to discuss each chakra as much as time permits. And the effects of that chakra in terms of its subtle anatomy, the crude anatomy, the physiology, and to demonstrate for you that chakras are junction boxes. And that each chakra combines the neurohumoral, endocrine, and muscular and organic functions at that particular level of the body. And it also gets into the mental aspects when you talk about the Vritis, the various psychic propensities. So we'll begin just briefly with a little ad about the Shiva Dancing School of Yoga. And here it is. You can email me to get more information. And now this is what we call shameless advertising. No one has turned away for lack of funds. And now with the formal portion of the lecture. And feel free to send questions as you wish or call me up. And so I'm expecting that you can see this. And this is a picture of the chakras combined with the famous Leonardo da Vinci drawing. And here we have the Muladhara Chakra, the base chakra. The Swadhistan Chakra located at the root of the genitals. The Manipur Chakra, where the jewels are, where the triple heater is, this triangle pointing upwards in the belly button area that governing digestion. The fourth chakra, people call it Anahat Chakra or the Unstruck Chakra. Some people call it the solar plexus. There are various definitions. In the chest, governing the heart and the lungs and the aerial factor. This chakra is the fifth chakra, the Shuddha Chakra, it means so very pure. And it governs the highest functions of the individual consciousness. And here is the actual seat of the mind, the Annye Chakra located between the eyebrows, but the physical seat is in the clitoral gland. And finally, we have the topmost chakra, which is called the Sahasraya Chakra, the Thousand-Peta Lotus. There are two other chakras at least that are mentioned at times. One is Lalona Chakra, which is located more or less at the upper part of the soft palate. Some people look upon the tip of the nose as a concentration point. And other people think in terms of the Guru Chakra, which is just underneath the Sahasraya Chakra. And it's said to be the location where the guru actually sits. Now this is a junction box, is like conduit. And you see that there are places where the wires connect and then they go to other places. And this is what chakras are all about. They are connecting points that make the unity of the body work and make it work harmoniously. Now here we're getting into a little description of the nervous system. The nervous system has several components. Right now we are looking at what's perhaps called the voluntary or somatic nervous system. And this includes the brain, the spinal cord, and the peripheral nerves that go to the various organs. And these peripheral nerves are to the arms and the legs. And they provide sensory and motor function. But these nerves also go to the organs, and they provide a certain amount of stimulation or inhibition of the organs. The spinal cord itself has its own thinking capacity to a limited degree. The brain, of course, is very complex and has many portions to it. Now here we have a description done by Ananta, and he sells these, and these are very nice. And this is pretty accurate. Describing the various chakras, the location, the functions of the chakras, the correspondence with the cosmic chakras or the cosmic low us, the layers of God's mind, if you like. And so, and here is a description of some of the glands that are associated with the chakras also. One of the things I'd like to emphasize is what's called the Naddies. There are said to be three primary nerve channels in the human body, according to the yogis. The first is the Eda Nadi, which ends in the left nostril. We're looking at the left side here. I hope you can see my cursor. And it begins at the anus and it crosses the midline. The midline is called Shushumna. And it is said that Kundalini, the vital energy rises as we speak, and my Kundalini is rising. So if I can finish this talk, we'll be lucky. Anyway, so as Kundalini rises, you get into this blissful state. You're on your own for the rest of this talk, guys and girls. And so the Kundalini rises up this chakra, up this Nadi, and as it pierces through each chakra, it gives you an increasing sense of bliss and an increasing sense of the approachment and the the apposition of the divine until you become divine yourself, which is the goal of yoga. As we know, Yoga Shitta Vritini Roohdaha is one definition, meaning yoga is the quieting of the mind. But then suppose you have a quiet mind, so what? So actually Baba's definition, Sri Sri Ananda Murthy's definition is Sangyogo Jogo Ittyukto Jivaparamatmanaha, which means yoga is the complete merger of the individual mind with the cosmic mind. And there we have the reason for the bliss. So the Pingala is the other one that comes up, and it ends in the right nostril. I'm not sure I did these cursors right, but anyway. And so that's, they correspond to the sympathetic nervous system, the parasympathetic nervous system, and the voluntary nervous system. So the Eda, ending of the left nostril, tends to slow the body down and make less muscular effort, makes people calmer. And the skin gets a little bit dry. And this is the parasympathetic nervous system. The system that governs the vegetative organs and makes you restore things. The next is the Pingala, and that governs the sympathetic nervous system, which is the fight or flight or freeze mechanism. And that ends in the right nostril. And so depending on which nostril is more prevalent, and there are scientific studies showing that in stroke patients who have knocked out part of their brain, this actually corresponds, and also ENT doctors know this, some of them, that when you breathe through your left nostril, you become calm. You breathe through the right nostril, you become agitated. And the balancing of the nostrils is accomplished with the help of the Shumna, Shushumna. And so that means that your Kundalini is able to rise, and you get into your state of bliss. So here's the just brief description of the currents of the flow. I think I'm going to go full screen on this if I can. Well, I'll just work with this here. I'm going to take a little bit of water. Water is critical for public speakers. And here's the description of these. The next chakra or the next aspect has to do with the spine. And as we were describing, the vertebrae are the bones that support the spine. And there are bones sticking out on either side. And there are joints between each bone, and this gets into the chakras, sorry, into the various ossenos. And we hear here pictorially the discs. This is the spinal cord and the anterior and posterior aspects, the ventral and dorsal aspects of the spinal cord, which have to do with sensory and motor functions. And the nerves go up and down, going through these. So we have described the Shushumna and the the Shushumna has Chitrani and Brahmani, different tubes within it. So subtly, the energy, the Kundalini flows to this Brahmani level. And as we saw in the spinal cord, here, there are actually layers, and there are layers of the spinal cord called the well, I won't get into their subtle names, their Latin names, the arachnoid, the pia, and the duramater. Now here we have a picture of the spinal cord and something about how the chakras interact with the spinal cord. So this is the spinal cord, and on either side of the spinal cord is what they call the sympathetic ganglion. And so there's one of here on this side, and then there's another on the other side, which you don't see in the picture. And this ganglion produces nerves that go to the various organs of the body. So this like, this is the third chakra, and it goes to the stomach and the liver. And here's the second chakra, and this is going to the bladder and the kidneys. And it also goes to the colon. You don't see that all the way down here, perhaps. And the fourth chakra sends certain nerves going to the heart and the lungs. And the fifth chakra goes, let's make this a little smaller here. And the fifth chakra goes to the throat and the thyroid and up to the eye. So there's a rough correspondence between these nerves that are going from one organ, from the spinal cord out to the sympathetic nervous system and out to the organs. Now similarly, these blue lines correspond to the parasympathetic nervous system, and they tend to be especially focused from the vagus nerve, which is the tenth vagus nerve, the tenth cranial nerve comes out of the skull. And it serves parasympathetic innervation to all these. So we have this functional equivalent of the parasympathetic and the sympathetic nervous systems. Then, of course, we have the voluntary nervous system, the somatic nervous system, which governs your arms and legs. And that's the closest description here to the Shushumna, which is the consciousness of it. Here we have another diagram showing, although the colors are reversed, here the blue is the sympathetic nervous system. And the red is the parasympathetic. And you see how they are meeting each other. So where they meet, let's say at the heart is a chakra, where they meet at the lungs as part of the chakra. Here is they meet at the level of the digestive system. And here they meet at the level of the bladder. Here they meet at the level of the colon. It was easier for them to draw the colon as the, as above the bladder. But in reality, the colon ends at the rectum and the anus, which is why we call it the first chakra. Now, modern medicine has adopted this system of chakras and Eda and Pingala. So you'll see there is these one, two, three, four, five roughly chakras ending in the nostrils. And this is the sixth chakra. This is the seventh chakra. This is the staff of Hermes, the symbol of Escholapius. So knowingly or unknowingly, modern Western medicine has adopted the chakra system as a description of the entire function. Okay, so let's get into the Muladhara Chakra. Maybe we don't have to get into the chakra. And this is the governance, the anal sphincter, the internal and external sphincter. The Muladhara Chakra is pictured as being a gold and yellow. It governs the solid factor in the sense of smell. And so functionally, the organs that it governs are the large intestine and the rectum. The rectum is what holds the the stool before you excrete it. And here we go. Now, what's true is that there are two sphincters at the Muladhara Chakra. We have the internal sphincter, which governs the holding in the stool when you're not thinking about it. Because if you have to think about squeezing your rectum all the time, that would be very uncomfortable. I knew one yoga teacher who thought it was a good idea to apply this Mula Bhanda throughout the whole forty-five minutes practice. I didn't like that. I didn't go back. Anyway, some people liked it. This is the internal sphincter, and it works unconsciously. This here is the external sphincter, and it works when you're thinking about it, and when you have to contract your Muladhara Chakra. And this is called Mula Banda. Here is where the stool hangs out, and this dentate line provides glands to loosen up, provide lubrication so it can go by. These are the hemorrhoidal veins, which provide lots of blood supply, so you don't get infected by all of the bacteria that are there. So what's true here is that here is you have a junction, not only of the sympathetic and the parasympathetic nervous systems, but of the voluntary and involuntary control systems. And so you can think about giving the Mula Banda and constricting your anus and holding a stool in. But it also works when you're not think about it. So this is a junction of the conscious and the unconscious parts of your nervous system and sphincters. We next get into the, well, this is more in digestive system. I'll get into this later. Just to let you know that smell is governed by the nose. And I think that the reason that the Muladhara Chakra is felt to be golden in color and smells is because baby poop is golden and smells, and it doesn't smell really bad until later on. And I think that this is the reason that the yogi started thinking of that chakra as being gold and yellow and governing smell. The next chakra is the Swadhistan Chakra. And it is said to be crescent shaped and milky white in color with the crescent pointing upwards. It governs the sense of taste, and it governs the liquid factor, the kidneys, the prostate, genital organs, male and female. And I'm feeding my second chakra constantly as we're doing this. And so here's a pictorial description of the kidneys, ureters, and bladder. And they are embryologically connected. The kidneys filter the blood. Blood is here going to the kidneys and back out. And it sends urine, which is the waste products. And it also adjusts your pH balance, calcium balance, potassium balance, sodium balance. Sends it down to the urinary bladder, which then stores it. And then when you're ready, it contracts and you pee it out. Now here, we have male and female bladders. This is the male genital organ. This is the female portion of it. You don't see the genital part so much. And here's where the ureters come in. So the bladder is a muscular organ that is not really under voluntary control, but you can relax and let it go. Let it go. There's a song about that by Walt Disney. And so in the male, you have the prostate here. In the female, the equivalent of the prostate is the uterus, which also is a genital organ. And so you have an internal and an external sphincter. So here's the internal urethral sphincter that keeps you from peeing on yourselves. It controls your urine from being put out when you're not thinking about it. So you can walk around and not having to wear a pad. But then there's also an external urinary, external urethral sphincter. So that you can relax or tighten. If you feel like you've got to go, but you don't want to, you can tighten that. So these are separate muscles, although people often confuse them in their functions. So you have to sometimes learn how to control one, the urinary sphincter versus the anal sphincter. They do tend to go together, and people do Kegel exercises, which is a contrast of all of them. There's a special mudra that Baba describes, and Ananda Murthy describes called the Jalantara, not the Jalan Heart, but it's called the three Banda Tryay Yoga, which helps to strengthen these sphincters and teaches them how to loosen also. So we see here that at the second chakra, we have a junction of the voluntary and the involuntary nervous systems, and the voluntary and the involuntary sphincters. So both are doing the same thing to control the flow of urine. Now here's a side view. Here we see the uterus. Here's the rectum that we talked about before. Here's a cut view of the colon leading into the rectum. Here's your bladder. And so this whole mess is the first chakra here. Second chakra is right next to it. And so when a man puts his heel into the into the first chakra, like when you're doing the twist pose of the Janashirasama, he's placing pressure on that first and second chakras and stimulating those muscles and strengthening them. And under the mire, we don't have the women putting their heels in there because we don't want them stimulating the sexual organs so much. So here's more of the same. The third chakra is called the Manipur Chakra. And it governs the digestive system. It also governs the sense of heat and light. I guess I should mention going back to the second chakra that, we'll get into the female part here, that the secretions in a healthy man or woman are white. And the semen or the vaginal secretions are white or clear. And there is some taste associated with those, and they're often, semen is somewhat sweet. And so I suspect that this is the reason that the yogis described that this chakra, the second chakra, governs the sense of taste and is white colored and is liquid. Another aspect of taste is that if you have no liquid in your mouth, as I keep drying my mouth out here, if you have no liquid in your mouth, you will find that you can't taste anything. Try putting some peanut butter and crackers in your mouth without any extra water or milk or chocolate milk or whatever you drink it with. And you'll find that you can barely taste it. So the taste buds are requiring this liquid factor, this liquid solute to help you with the tasting. So Manipur, third chakra located at the belly button governs the esophageal sphincters and pancreas digestive organs, heat and light. It's set to be triangular and red. And so you will recall from your thermodynamics and chemistry lectures that the delta symbol is used from Greek, and that's exactly that same symbol that means heat, light, and change. So it governs vision. And when something gets hot enough, you can see it because it glows. These are the correlates that the yogis figured out thousands and thousands of years ago. It also governs the adrenal glands, which is part of what secretes cortisol, which gives you energy when you're doing your fight or flight responses. And it governs the liver and the stomach. The liver is an organ that has many, many different functions of chemistry and building blood. So here's a brief overview of the digestive system. Digestive starts in the brain when it stimulates your thinking, you're going to eat, stimulates the salivary glands so that the salivary animal starts digesting the starches. And then the saliva gives you that liquid factory so you can swallow. And as you swallow, you have voluntary muscles here, but the rest of this is involuntary. So this act of swallowing is both voluntary and involuntary. Here's another junction box. And here's the esophagus where it dumps into the stomach. Now here we have the lower esophageal sphincter. And so this keeps the stomach acid from running back up into the esophagus and causing heartburn. If you're too fat or if you have a problem with the hiatus, what they call this esophageal hiatus, the stomach herniates up through it and gives acid. But the stomach produces acid, and this sphincter does not let it go, go back up. And so it protects you. And this is not governed intentionally, but when you swallow, so this is governed accidentally on purpose. When you swallow it, opens up. When you stop swallowing, it closes. So this is another junction, another sphincter, which governs and combines the voluntary and involuntary portions of the nervous system and of the organelles. There's another sphincter here, pyloric sphincter, which is purely involuntary, and it opens up when the stomach somehow figures out that it's been chewing long enough and digesting long enough that the food is ready to go into the duodenum and pass into the rest of the digestive system. And so briefly in the digestive system, we have the pancreas, which secretes insulin and glucagon. Insulin lowers your blood sugar, glucagon raises it. So we have these areas that are governing both the ups and downs. And again, so the chakras are helping to govern each of these functions. Okay, moving along here. Part of the deal is that the third chakra governs vision. And so when you're agitated, the eyes get open. And when you're very interested in something, the pupils dilate. So this third chakra has to do with opening the vision to more impulses. In our course, we get into the mechanics of vision and how the eye muscles govern it, and how you can exercise your eye muscles using various yoga techniques. Now moving along to the Anahat Chakra. This is the cardio pulmonary plexus, and it governs lungs and breathing and the aerial factor. And you may ask me, well, what does the heart have to do with gas? Well, the heart pumps the blood around, and the blood carries the oxygen and the carbon dioxide. So this viana, if I'm not mistaken, this viana vaivu carries all of these factors. It's that chakras felt to be smoky and greenish in color. Governes the sense of touch. And the pranendria is there. So when you say it touched my heart, I know when people feel something, they put their hand up to their chest or they do the pledge of allegiance or whatever. This is the pranendria. This is part of a intuition level that senses people are soft or hard or cold or warm. It's very soft sensations. It governs the thymus gland, which is an organ of immunity, governs cellular immunity especially. And the spleen is also involved with this part of the cellular immunity. And this is the organ of discrimination, of Viveka, that one of the Vritis, one of the psychic propensities of the fourth chakra is Vivek. And so people are named Vivek. And what that means is I know the difference between good and evil. I know the difference between good and bad or soft or hard. And what is the immune system? So we're finding a very central point of the immune system here at this fourth chakra, which is governing the discrimination of which is governing the discrimination of what is me, what is not me? What's a virus that is not mine? What's a virus that normally lives in my body? What's a bacteria that normally lives with me? What's a bacteria that normally doesn't? What's a cancer cell? What's not a cancer cell? So all this discrimination is going on at the fourth chakra. And here we have a description of the heart and the lungs, or at least the lungs. So that as you breathe in, comes to the humidified passages of the nose. I guess if I breathe through my nose, I wouldn't have such a problem with my voice. Maybe I'll try that. I'll sound like Donald Trump. That's how he breathes. Anyway, and so the air passages go into the lungs, goes into these small saculars. Really, these are microscopic little balloons. And the blood flows right past them. And the blood capillaries exchange the oxygen and the carbon dioxide. You need the oxygen to metabolize and the carbon dioxide, which becomes acidic. It gets liberated. Hereby, by the way, is the diaphragm. And the diaphragm is governed by the phrenic nerve, which is also voluntary and involuntary. You don't see the phrenic nerve here. It's governed roughly at the level of the third and fourth cervical vertebrae. And the diaphragm is the muscle that you use when you're breathing, when you're asleep, because you're not thinking about it. Now, right now, I'm breathing with my chest muscles because I'm trying to move a lot of air. But I'm also using my diaphragm. Now I've decided to breathe through my nose, so I don't have to be drinking all the time. Let your nose do the work. So here is the diaphragm. When you are relaxed, the diaphragm is up like that. And when you are breathing in, the distance between here and there shortens. And so that makes the chest cavity larger. Air gets pulled into the lungs. Of course, there are ribs and intercostal muscles that help along with that. So this diaphragm, this fourth chakra, is another junction between the voluntary and the involuntary portions of your system. And here's a picture of the intercostal muscles. Three layers of muscles that govern ribs. So when you take a big breath and bring your arms up over your head, which is another way, we have a five- or six-part yogic breathing we teach in the course. You know, part is just diaphragm and chest, bring the arms up, shoulders, and then into the low back to get a really full breath. This is very invigorating. It doesn't take a whole lot of extra stamina, so anybody can do it. Here we have a picture of the heart and blood, blue blood going out to the lungs, getting oxygenated, coming back as red blood into the left atrium, into the left ventricle, getting pumped out to the rest of the body. This is very quick. In our course, we spend more time on this. Here's the liver, and here's the diaphragm. Here's a brief shot of the circulatory system, again, describing the exchange of the blood. So this heart chakra and the lung chakra, this cardiopulmonary plexus, is the junction for all of the flow of the aerial factor of the oxygen and carbon dioxide. It goes through the body. And I like to think that it's greenish or smoky because yogis of long time, if you looked up, if you wanted to see the sky, you couldn't see the sky, but they could feel the air. So you can feel air, so that's the sense of touch. And if you look up and you're a forest dweller, you see green. That's what's in the trees. And the other way of perceiving air is because it's smoky. Somebody lit a fire and you see the smoke. So that's how you perceive that aerial factor. And finally, Didi Ananda Karuna was with me at one seminar I was giving. And there was a little tiny little tornado, this little whirlwind of leaves. And you could see things whirling around in a circle. And she said that Baba explained to her that this kind of whirlwind, these little tornadoes, these little whirlwinds, is what makes people think that the chakra is round. Because the air goes around and around in circles. Hurricanes go around and around in circles. Here's just some spots of the spleen, of course, the lymphatic system, which goes through the whole immune portions. There's the thymus gland, which is very large in babies as it's learned to distinguish right from wrong and what's me and what's not me. And then, as you get older, it shrinks because it's already done its work. So touch is found in the skin. And the hairs and various nerves have found it. I am zipping through here. The vocal cords is the visuddha chakra. It governs the sense of sound and the ether factor. Ether is space, the ultimate frontier. Ether is the substance through which, or the almost, the potential substance through which radiation flows, light and electromagnetic radiation, cosmic rays. Regular sound does not flow through because regular sound is atmospheric. But telepathic sound and radiation is another vibratory type of sound. And it governs the thyroid gland and the parathyroids. So we have a picture here of the vocal cords. And when you are breathing easily, the vocal cords are open. When you are speaking, they vibrate and they get close to each other. And then, when you are swallowing, they close completely so that you don't get water and food into your lungs and give you pneumonia. And these are voluntary and involuntary functions of the fifth chakra. Because you can breathe, or you can cut your throat functions off, or you can do the jalantara banda, you know, putting your head down and closing the vocal cords. And when you're speaking, it's partly voluntary and partly involuntary. Sometimes you say stuff you shouldn't want to say, and your speech is involuntary. But even if you're just holding your breath, that can be voluntary or involuntary. So another junction of the voluntary and involuntary functions of your body at the fifth chakra. Here we get into some of more of the aspect, the sound is the function of the fifth chakra. So you not only produce sound with your with your voice, but you also listen to sound. And here we have the complex mechanism. The external ear is like an elephant's ear that gathers sound. If you want to hear better, you put your hands up like this, and you will hear better. Then the sound comes into this tube, vibrates the tympanic membrane, which then has an amplification system that turns it from a mechanical vibration into a vibration of fluid moving back and forth. And that stimulates various little tiny hairs in the cochlea, which then create an electromagnetic or an electrochemical system, which goes to your brain. The semicircular canals govern your sense of balance. And when you move around, that there are little rocks in those canals that move and give you the sense of motion or being still. And here we have a shot of just some of the thyroid gland. And the parathyroids are buried within the thyroid gland. And so when we do asanas, like the shoulder stand of the fish, we stretch these out. When we do the fish, we expand the chest. That's another thing. When we do the peacock pose, we place pressure on the manipur chakra. When we do the gomuk asana, we place pressure on the second chakra. When you do the women's asanas, they're pressing pressure on the ovaries and the uterus. And when you're doing the jnusirasana or the matyendra asana, you're putting your heel into the first chakra, and you're placing pressure on those. So each of these is being pressed. So this lalona chakra at the soft palate and the face, it connects the mind with the motor organs. So this is subtle. And there are yogic practices of pressing your tongue against here and stopping breathing, which may or may not be a good idea. I don't try it because you could die doing that. But I suppose if you did that, you would probably get to a nirvikasamadhi state. So, but that requires special training, and I'm not going to teach you how to do that. But there are yogis who used to clip the tongue, clip the ligament holding the tongue, so they could stick their tongue all the way back. The agya chakra governs the pituitary and the hypothalamus. And it governs all of the other glands. So the so this is, the agya chakra is the sixth chakra. And it has apara and para, two major vritis that of knowledge of the world and knowledge of the spirituality. And similarly, the physical pituitary gland has the anterior and posterior lobe. And it's said to be the seat of the mind. So it sits here under the hypothalamus. And it sends all these sub-hormones to all these other organs and tells them so that there's a cascade from the pituitary to the uterus that constricts the pituitary, the ovaries. The ovaries then produce estrogen and progesterone. The pituitary sends impulse, luteinizing hormone and follicle stimulating to the testes, which then produce testosterone and other androgens. And the female organs, you know, to make the breasts secrete that prolactin, oxytocin, we're now allowing is an organ that makes the uterus contract, makes men have orgasms, and makes people very fond of each other. And that's produced by the posterior lobe of the pituitary. So this is what a supremely complex organ. And it receives neural and humoral impulse from the hypothalamus. So finally, just a picture of the brain to see all the different parts, things. Now, with functional MRI, we're discussing, discovering more and more. And I'm about running out of time here. So I will just go back and mention the pineal gland, which is in here someplace. And it's the organ that governs sleep and wake cycles. And thereby governs all the rest of the body. And finally, a word from our sponsor. This is where the guru chakra lives, just under the sahasrar chakra. And there's a specific meditation on this, which you can all learn. And each chakra has vritis associated with it and different levels of memory, which I will get into you for at some other time. But here's a picture of the pineal gland, which has the highest circulation, other than the kidneys, of any part of the body. And so it must be doing something right because it governs everything else. It does contain fibers. It receives fibers from the eyeballs directly and indirectly, which then have governed. So this is part of what's considered to be the third eye in that sense. Okay, and that's it, friends and neighbors. Thank you very much. Those of you who want to make, learn more, can contact me and you can take the course. Namaskar. Have a good time. It's my pleasure. Please rate me, good or bad, and I'd like to get some feedback on this. Thank you. Take care. Baba nam kevalam.